At this time, I'll call the October 7th York County Council Meeting to Order, our First Order of Businesses invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'll recognize the Honorable William Buck Roddy from District Four.
Please stand. Usually, we start off with a prayer, but tonight, I just want to ask everybody to close their eyes and think about what's going on in this world and how blessed we are to be here in York County, out of harms way, and how truly blessed we are. We see all the images on TV across the world, so I want to make sure that we give thanks and also ask for blessings and speedy recovery for those who are impacted by the hurricanes. Thank you. Now, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the heels of what Councilmember Roddy has said, this is our first meeting since the Hurricane Helene. It's amazing how just a few days can change your whole life and your perspective. I think it does help us all keep things in perspective. On behalf of the council, I do want to say thank you to York County. There has been a lot of work that has been done. There has been a ton of people that have been without power. They have been restored. Greg Suskin, Josh Edwards, and the folks at the county have done an amazing job in emergency management services to help us get back on our feet. In terms of locally, I don't know if you saw recently FEMA has declared this area eligible for individual as well as public assistance, and that information is available on the public website. And I am very proud of the fact that our county has also stepped up to do some help with our folks in the western North Carolina area who have really seen some devastation that I don't think any of us could have ever imagined. They are putting together some trips to go there. If you will go and pay attention to our county website, if you want to contribute or donate any items, you can do that here. You can also do it at the Heckle Boulevard location, which is at 1070 on Heckle. They are going to have several times that they're going to deliver that, and you're certainly welcome to contribute if you'd like to do that. And I know that they certainly are in our prayers and in our thoughts. It comes in times like this that you see the people pull together, and that's what means the most, the people pulling together to help each other. Tonight, we do have oath of office for newly appointed board and commission members. When I call your name, if you'll please come forward and stand in front of the podium, our county attorney will meet you in order to swear you in for the border commission that you've been appointed to serve on. We have Richard Roach, Bethesda Fire Tax District Board, Teresa Steele, York County Forever, District Five, Janet Clausen, Employee Grievance Committee. And as you make your way forward, let me just say, thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Two of these folks are actually serving my district, and I appreciate the work that you do. And I know that our council as a whole can't thank you enough. We can't do the work of the people without you being here. And you rarely get thanked. You certainly don't get paid for the work that you do, but we thank you very much for the work that you do on behalf of our people. Thank you again to you folks for agreeing to serve our community. At this time, we move now to the appearance section of our agenda. The first item is for council and staff, and I'll recognize Carlton Carter, who will come forward to recognize Tammy Ledford on her service and retirement with York County Public Safety Communications.
Come on down. Hello? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone, members of county council and citizens, and of course, some of our telecommunicators that are in here as well. Just wanted to take a few minutes to speak about Tammy. And so, a little bit about Tammy. When she first came to work with us, Tammy's the reason that I have these gray hairs right here, and why I'm bald headed now, because I was always rubbing my head, and, you know, because I was a newly appointed shift supervisor. And so, Tammy came, she was assigned in my shift. So normally, you kind of have an agenda, you know, when you welcome new folks, and kind of lay things out, and you try to get to know them. And, you know, Tammy was complete opposite of that. She came in and she was very vocal, very matter-of-fact about things, and she didn't hold back from saying what was on her mind. So, me being in my early twenties, like I said, you know, a fresh supervisor, she kind of, you know, threw me into a whirlwind of how to, you know, work through all of that. So, but moving beyond all of that, just a couple of things about Tammy is that, so Tammy's been, or I've known Tammy for 24 to 28 years that I've worked for the family. I'm the operations manager now. And so, learned a lot about Tammy. And when you work with someone that long, you almost become family. So, and they actually sometimes treat you better than you do your own family because you spend more time with them when you work in 12-hour shifts. And then we also have to work overtime and all of that. So, you know, we had that connection at work, but then we also had a connection with, through the fire service, because I volunteered with the Newport Fire Department. Tammy was with the Bethesda Fire Department at the time, so, you know, so we would run structured fires together and fire alarms. And so, would actually end up working together out on fire scenes, volunteering her time. And also, she was an EMT with York Rescue Squad as well. And so, you know, I volunteered with River Hills and worked for Piedmont, and so we would also meet out on incidents that may require multiple ambulances. And also, but, you know, with saying all of that, you can see that Tammy was very passionate about helping our community. So, not only from the pain aspect, working at the 911 center, but also volunteering her time, you know, helping the community. And that was in addition to her family, because, you know, she has a son and a daughter, DJ and Tasha, Asha, excuse me, that, you know, that she was raising as well. And so, she, that, all of that went into the mix as well. So, and just kind of moving beyond that, I bring up the fire and EMS because that is a good background to have in our profession, because it helps you to understand what is actually happening in the field. Because when new dispatchers come online and they start hearing certain statements made over the radio, and they're like, what does that mean? You know, what are they doing? And so, with her background, she was able to explain a lot of that to the new folks, you know, once they came online. So, and with that being said, she moved into a training officer position on shift, also an assistant supervisor at that point as well. So, she was starting to take on more leadership within the agency. And then also, like I said, just helping to train and mold the new folks as they come in as well. So, one other thing about Tammy is that accountability that I would like to mention is that she always held herself accountable, and especially once she moved into a supervisory position. And that's something that's important to have, because we're all human. Sometimes things happen, and sometimes it's like pulling teeth to get, you know, the truth out of people. But that wasn't Tammy. So, Tammy would call me, and it'd be like 3 o'clock in the morning, and she would call me all upset, Carlton, this just happened. You know, I'm so sorry. And, you know, and I'm like, let me wake up a minute, you know, get my bearings together. And so, you know, we would talk about what occurred, and obviously would have to look into it. And, you know, if anything needed to happen, you know, she was one that, like I said, really held herself accountable and, you know, was, from that aspect. So, she also, one thing she did was she liked to motivate her shift. And so, you know, to push them to go above and beyond. And so, you know, each month, you know, she would sit down and look at numbers, because everything we do is tracked through some sort of reports. And so, she would actually sit down monthly with those numbers and would see, you know, which person on the team, like I said, worked harder, went above and beyond, and would, you know, work to acknowledge them for their achievements. Okay. So, I think I hit on all my important points there, because I know you do have a meeting after this. So, but we would like to say thank you very, very much to Tammy for her 24 years of service. And I also want to mention about her dedication. So, we mentioned the hurricane. So, Thursday night, which I came into work Thursday night, Tammy was working Thursday night, in addition to Jordan, that's sitting back there, assistant supervisor. And so, the storm hit right at shifting, you know, for us. And so, we thought we were going to be okay, but we weren't okay. So, the phones just completely just blew up, ringing off the hook, and which you all know from being citizens here, and saw, or some of you probably experienced, some effects of the storm. But Tammy, you know, in addition to a couple of others, Tammy actually offered to stay over, you know, for several hours after working the 12-hour shift, you know. And she went and got onto another console where she was just working as a call taker. And so, that, like I said, just tells you the dedication that she had, that it wasn't, well, my shift is over, I'm going home, that she actually offered to stay over. And then in addition to that, she was always very flexible and adaptive to change. So, when we started, everything was written on paper. So, we wrote everything down. And we had like three radio channels. And so, as things progressed, we actually got what we called a CAD system. And so, where we started to enter the information into the CAD system. And, you know, with that, and that was the Green Stream CAD, or AS400, that folks that are familiar with that. Well, we shifted from that to Windows. And then, we also moved from, when I mentioned the three radio systems, to a multi-channel radio system now, where all the firefighters and paramedics and EMTs and animal control and coroner's office, and even some other entities can all communicate with each other now, which is a great thing. But Tammy worked through all of that. And then, we also consolidated, because when we were hired, 911 was under emergency management. And so, they actually, and I won't remember the date at this point, but basically, they took the 911 folks from emergency management, the dispatchers that the sheriff's office had, and they brought us together to make public safety communications. And so, the reason for mentioning all of that is because every little step that has occurred over the years, we always lose a handful of people, because they're like, I don't want to talk to the police, or I don't want to deal with the firefighters, or I was at the sheriff's office, and I knew when a call came into the sheriff's office, it was for me. And now they're having to be on the front end of that, of taking a call that somebody's going to be at the tree, or someone's been shot. And so, I bring that up about Tammy because Tammy worked through all of that, like she never missed a beat, that every time something happened, Tammy was there to work through it, to adapt. And so, that alone is something to acknowledge, because there's a list of this long, not exaggerating, of folks that have left us to go do something else, because that wasn't for them, and they weren't about change. So, but in saying all of that, on behalf of the county council, we'd like to present Tammy with a clock to say thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Excellent.
Carlton, thank you for your words. On behalf of your colleague, I feel like you could have talked all night long with all those stories that you could have had 24 to 48 years. That's a long time. But we do, we do want to say thank you, thank you, Tammy, for your service to the county. And we appreciate, you know, that public safety communications is one of those areas where you have to have folks that truly speak their minds and serve with their hearts, which it sounds like Tammy did. We appreciate you being here. Any comments?
I just wanted to say real quick, I've been here for quite a while, and that was one of the most heartfelt, outgoing presentation and speeches I've ever heard of an employee. So, we have a saying that, give people their flowers while they're living. And I think he just gave her a nice big bouquet of flowers for a job well done. So, thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy. You left the podium, you know, blank. Here's your moment of truth, if you want to speak. You want to get up and say something, or are you good? All right. Thank you, ma'am. We do now have Beth White with the York County Farm Bureau to thank the council for their continued support. Or her substitute.
My name is Bailey Westbrook Edwards, and my address is 1870 Oakdale Road in Rockville. So, we're here today on behalf of York County Farm Bureau to simply say thank you. Thank you for always listening to us, protecting us, and understanding the importance of agriculture. In the wake of disastrous hurricane and port closures, the need to protect our farmers and our land should be at the forefront of every York County resident and government officials' minds. Thomas Jefferson once said that agriculture is our wisest pursuit, because it will in the end contribute the most to real wealth, good morals, and happiness. If the farmer is poor, then so is the whole country. Please know that the farming community is strong and resilient, and we are committed to helping York County and you as our governing body. Thank you again for your time, your continued support, and your commitment to our county.
I think I speak on behalf of the entire council when I say I feel like it's our job to thank you, and you not to thank us, for the work that you do in our communities to support agriculture. We do thank you for the work that you do.
Oh, man. Thank you so much.
Thank y'all. Thank you for coming. She'll be here.
Good seeing you.
Thank you again. We move now to our public forum session. This is an opportunity for us to hear from folks in the community. We do have a limited number of folks that can sign up. One of the tasks that I have, the job to do is to cut you off if you go beyond two minutes. Looks like we don't have a whole lot of folks who have signed up here tonight, so I'm hoping I don't have to cut anybody off. But when you come forward, if you will please say your name, give your address, and then if you'll start, when you notice on the screen, when it starts going to yellow and red, when it goes to red, it means your time's been cut off, and you can cut off before I have to, like, do that. That would, I would appreciate that. I will say this, tonight, we typically have a lot of old and new business. Tonight, we have eight public hearings. So, if you are here to speak about something that is a public hearing item, you can wait until the public hearing item to speak, and then you aren't cut off. You're more than welcome to do the two minutes, or you can do both. We prefer that you stick to one or the other, but that's certainly up to you. Several folks have scratched out their names, so I'm not sure. I will read out the ones that are not scratched out, and if you thought you had two minutes, and you wanted your two minutes, you can raise your hand at the end, and we'll figure that out. First individual, James Turner. You'll wait? Okay. Terry Jackson?
I'll wait.
All right. You'll wait, too. Lloyd Cash?
I'll wait.
All right. Well, that, those are all of the individuals who signed up. If there's anyone who definitely wants to speak for your two minutes and can't wait for the public hearing, please raise your hand. All right. That concludes our public forum. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda is approved. We move now to our first public hearing item. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 24-40, tax map number 10300001, to rezone from RUD to AGC, .88 acre portion of a 218 acre parcel in District Three. Mr. Buono?
Yes, as the chair stated, this is an application for a portion of a parcel that's just under an acre. The overall parcel is over 200 acres, and it's to go from RUD to AGC on Hickory Grove Road. So, the applicant is proposing here to eliminate split zoning. On the left, you'll see there's just a tiny sliver of mint green RUD compared to the overall forest green that represents agricultural conservation. So, they're looking to create one new five-acre parcel elsewhere on the larger 218 acres. In order to do that, they just need to cure that split zoning. So, staff recommends approval. It's consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. You can see the future land use map designation is agriculture for this area. And more than 99% of the parcel area is already zoned AGC. This will also eliminate the split zoning status. By a six-to-zero vote, planning commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff before we open public hearing? I thought the burning question would be, why is this little piece in the middle of everything, even RUD?
It's just one of those historical anomalies. Parcels were divvied up along railroad tracks, which is present here, school districts, all, you name it, there's a way to cut up parcels back in the day.
There's no structure currently on the property?
Not in the area that has AGC on it, or RUD, excuse me.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, real quick. So, that's not part of the right of way, right there, Jim?
Uh, no.
It's not? Okay.
All right. Is there anyone, anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries unanimously. Move now to item number two. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, 24-41, tax map number 63500048, to rezone from RSF 40 to RSF 30, 1.57 acre parcel in District Six. Mr. Buono?
Yes, this request on Forest Hills Circle, just over an acre and a half, they are looking to go to RSF 30 from the existing RSF 40, and the purpose is to subdivide the existing parcel into two. So, they want to have two lots here, each of at least 30,000 square feet. So, staff recommends approval of the request. It's not consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. If you look on the map on the right, this is designated for neighborhood residential, which would be more appropriate for their RMX districts. However, this is an existing neighborhood. It is one of the largest lots in the neighborhood, so certainly subdividing it to be of a similar size to those in the area makes sense. And by six-to-zero vote, the planning commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? I guess the only question I would have is, why would staff determine that this is inconsistent with the comp plan again? I'm not sure I understand.
So, the future land use designation here, that tanish color is neighborhood residential, and that aligns itself with the RMX 20, 10, and 6 districts.
But this proposal is less density?
Correct. So, the comp plan would suggest they need, they would, a more appropriate rezoning request would be to a more dense district.
I still have heartburn with the fact that we would have any kind of opposition to something that is less dense than what they could be allowed to do by right or under the comp plan. That still is always a confusing interpretation to me. Any other questions for staff before we open public hearing?
So, our comp plan would be
So, our comp plan would be calling for it to be split more than just into two acres? I mean, two lots?
So, if you take the comp plan literally, as opposed to as a guide, then it would suggest that, yes, you would want it to be rezoned to a district that would allow lots as small as 20,000 square feet, 10,000 or less. But here, staff and Planning Commission see that it's suitable to go to RSF 30.
Any other questions for staff? All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Vote close. Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We move now to item number...
Three.
Are we at three?
Three.
Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 24-42, tax map number 593-0000008 and 009, to rezone from RSF 30 to GC, two parcels that total 5.2 acres in District 4. Mr. Buono?
Yes, these application properties, these two parcels, just over five acres, are on Hurlong Court. As you can see from the aerial here, this is in a donut hole inside of the city of Rock Hill, so all the grayed-out areas in the aerial that depicts the city of Rock Hill jurisdiction. So, the applicant is proposing to develop an event venue on the property. Here's a sketch of what the property owner would like to do there. So, here's what that might look like in context with the existing area in the city. So, you can see there's residential to the west and south, and there's commercial along Hurlong Avenue to the north. So, this is a municipal infill designation in our comp plan, so when that occurs, we reach out to the jurisdiction involved to see what their comp plan might suggest would be an appropriate land use for the area in Rock Hill's plan. The city calls for this to be neighborhood residential, so this proposal is not in keeping with their comp plan, therefore, it's not in keeping with ours. So, staff recommends denial. It's not consistent with the comp plan. The use is not consistent with the surrounding uses that are in the city, so everything around it is either residential or commercial into the north on Hurlong Ave. And a more appropriate use of the property, according to our mutual plans, would be to either develop it by right as RSF 30, which allows residential uses, or to annex it into the city to explore what other opportunities that would function if it's rezoned into the city. So, staff recommend denial, and by six-to-zero vote, Planning Commission likewise recommends denial.
Any questions for staff? I would ask, what's allowed by right under RSF 30?
So, that's primarily residential uses. It does allow a couple of non-residential uses, such as churches and schools, but it's predominantly residential.
So, what's the density allowed under RSF 30?
30,000 square.
So, it would be a 30,000 square foot lot. I can look up the density for you, but off the top of my head, I believe it'd be about 1.5 dwelling units per acre.
1 point, say that again.
Let me confirm that for you.
Okay.
Yes, so RSF 30 would be 1.5 dwelling units per acre for single-family detached.
So, with five acres, that would, you're saying by right, that would allow seven and a half homes?
Thereabouts, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? When you come forward, if you'll state your name, give your address before you start speaking.
Thank you, council. Peter Beck, Morgans Glen, Phase 1, 1524 Hurlong Court. I'm the HOA president there on that phase, and we have a number of residents here from the Phase 1 and 2 that are against this proposal, and we agree with the planning as to deny.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Good evening, James Turner, 436 Tyson's Forest. While we would certainly appreciate an event venue in the area, and we hope them success, from a location standpoint, it's just not appropriate. Assuming they are successful, there will be a good bit of noise into Tyson's Forest from their events. If they're not successful, then we end up with a commercial zone that's smack against our neighborhood with no future input on it. So, we recommend denying. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against?
Linda Beck, 1524 Hurlong Court. I'm also against in the Morgans Glen development, mainly because the traffic flow there does not, it's not conducive to all that traffic coming in for the wedding venue as it is now. We have a hard time getting out of our development right across from the hospital unless there was some sort of a light, which we have fought against for years, to try and get a light there and have not succeeded in that. So, that's another concern of ours, is the traffic.
Anyone else who wish to speak against?
My name is Terry Jackson. I live at 1654 Jonesberry Drive in Tyson's Forest. We live in the cul-de-sac on Jonesberry Drive that backs right up to this property. We've been there since 1998, and this lies adjacent to a nursing home, a drug rehab center, and three neighborhoods. And this pond area also has surround sound. It magnifies all the sirens that go to the hospital, barking dogs, loud trucks. So, I can imagine what music from an event venue might encounter to us, so I'm against it.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Diane Black, and I live in Morgans Glen, Phase 1, and we have been there about eight years now. And to turn this property over to commercial would be bad for the lot. It's a senior citizen area, and we have trouble enough with the fire trucks and the ambulances trying to get in. To help anyone else in one of the homes as it is, that would really be an awful lot of traffic in there. But to leave it as residential, seven homes would never fit in that property because there is a huge wetland and pond there that was designated by the McGill family to start. We had to stay as a wetland because of the natural animals and things that are in there. We have deer and everything in there, which is wonderful in the middle of the city. But seven homes would, they would have to totally redo that property to even get that kind of homes in there, which would magnify the traffic, all that's all over again. So, I'm definitely against all of that.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If you'll come forward, give your name and address. I'm sorry?
Can we both come?
Sure.
My name is Eric Hillman, 7113 Anchorage Lane, Antigua Cay.
Casey Hillman, 1310 Iris Drive, Charlotte, North Carolina.
So, as a 35-year businessman in Charlotte, North Carolina, who lives in South Carolina, when you have, when you're a father of two daughters, and both daughters are in business for themselves, and when Casey came up and said, hey, Dad, I'd like to look at doing a wedding venue somewhere, we started searching areas, and I said, well, do you want to put it in Charlotte, because that's where you live? She goes, I grew up in Fort Mill. She goes, I think having a wedding venue in historic York County is a lot better than in Charlotte. There's not a lot of venues. One of her best friends is a wedding planner. We started looking around, and by the grace of God, we found this little piece of property. It's set perfect for a wedding venue. It's set perfect the way it's set up with the little dam at the end. It would have been beautiful to have a little gazebo put over the dam where you could get married over the dam. And there wasn't very much in Rock Hill. When I talked to Deanna at zoning, she said, Eric, you're going to have to go to D-HAC because there's no way they're going to approve it, or go to York County and get annexed in. And I said, respectfully, Casey, being a female and wanting to have her own business, wanted it to be in York County. If it was Rock Hill, we wouldn't look at it. And when we purchased the property, we knew it was residential. But we didn't think because of the wetlands, it was really unusable. It was set up perfect for a wedding venue. Did not think there would be any kind of issue getting it transferred over because the hospital is right beside it or right behind it. Medical is all around it, and we did know that there was residential. When we came in, there is a house structure. The unhoused were living there. When we went into the home, there were needles, there were drug bottles, there were drugs in the house. We cleaned the house out, we cleaned the property up, we cleaned all of the wetlands up, and we took care of it. When the hurricane came, we had trees that came down. We got the trees down immediately because we knew we wanted to take care of this property. Coming here and having neighbors that aren't in favor of us having a business there, that's not a place that we want to do business. We want to do business where people want to have us come in. So, talking to Casey, because we have neighbors that aren't in favor of us coming in, we're going to pull our zoning. We feel like that it's a perfect spot. D-HAC approved us for a septic system. When they came out, they thought it was a great spot. That's why they approved it. They could have, and when I talked to Deanna, she said they're never going to approve it, and they did. Being a police officer in Antigua Cay from 1992 to 2001, I went through 9/11, and I saw what neighbors did when they pulled together. I'm sorry, but we don't want to be in a neighborhood where our neighbors don't want us there. So, we are going to pull, and we'll just let it go back to the way it was.
Thank you, sir. So, you are withdrawing your application?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Kendry, what's the appropriate action here? Do we have to take action on this, or is he allowed to withdraw at this moment?
He's allowed to withdraw, notified planes, notified here of record, and maybe confirm it with an email just to close the mouth.
So, we need to close the public hearing and no action taken on the main motion?
You can accept, move to accept the withdrawal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any need to continue the public hearing. Do we have a motion to close?
Vote close.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Motion to accept the withdrawal.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, withdrawal is accepted. Looks like that was the most interesting one tonight. All right, we move, we're going to go ahead and move now to...
You know, citizens are leaving. It's almost worth recognizing what just happened with Mr. Hillman. That was incredible, listening to the neighbors and making a really good decision to send the best interest of the citizens in the area.
That wiped out our audience, too.
Yeah, it did. But that's pretty incredible. I'm glad we got to witness that tonight.
We are moving now to item number four. Our public hearing, rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 24-44, tax map number 721-0000014065, to rezone from UD to GC, two parcels that total 4.7 acres in District 7. Mr. Buono?
Yes, this application covers these two parcels here on the west side of 21. So, the applicant here is proposing to develop the property as a small commercial center. The proposal here is to include auto parts retail, oil change services, a quick-service restaurant, and a daycare facility. Those proposed buildings are highlighted in purple, so you can see the conceptual layout of what that site would look like. And here's that site again with those buildings in purple situated on the existing area on 21. Staff recommends approval of the request. It's not consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. So, if you look at the map on the right, it's I-77 corridor employment, so that designation is really looking for light industrial, office and institutional, and business and technology parks for target industries. However, there is a significant presence of GC. If you look at the map on the left, that deep red color is general commercial, so the parcels adjacent, there's parcels on the east side of 21, on both sides of Region Parkway that are general commercial. The uses that they're proposing here are compatible with the area as well as any other uses in the district, and this would also remove another parcel from the legacy UD district. By a six-to-zero vote, Planning Commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? Do we have one here who wishes to speak against this request? Anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Vote close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Move now to item number five. Rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 24-45, tax map number 721-000001, to rezone from UD to LI, 4.49 acre parcel in District 7. Mr. Buono?
Yes, this application is just a little bit north of the last case. It is addressed on Terry's Road, but it does have frontage on Highway 21 as well, just about four and a half acres. So, the applicant here is proposing to develop the site with an enclosed boat and RV storage facility. So, all of the colors there, aside from the blue stormwater management ponds, are the buildings that would be on site. Here's what that looks like in context with the area. Staff recommends approval. It is consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. Vehicle storage itself may not represent target employment, but certainly the LI district is a target district for the I-77 corridor employment, future land use map designation. It is adjacent to a parcel that is zoned LI, and the district is compatible with the surrounding uses. And additionally, it would remove another parcel from the legacy UD district. By a five-to-one vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Any questions for staff?
Can you go back on slide, please? All right, thank you.
Any questions? Oh, okay. I thought he had a question.
I thought he had a question.
I want to see if it could be aligned differently.
I have a question, too. Go ahead.
Okay. I was just going to ask a quick question. I know we went through some back and forth a couple weeks ago about storage units. Just out of curiosity, had we went through with our plans to strike this particular zone and make certain ones by special exception, how would this have fallen into what we were looking to do? Would it have still been approved? Would we still have been able to do it? Had we made those changes or got on track to make those changes?
So, the use that the applicant has proposed for the site is boat and RV storage, vehicle storage. It's a distinct use from self-storage.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Emma, you're done?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Jonathan, are they able to use that Terry's Road?
That remains to be determined. That would have to be designed by an engineer, another design professional, when they go to lay out their site plan in more detail. Right now, this is just a conceptual plan for the purposes of rezoning to illustrate their intent for all of you. But when it comes time to design the site, they may have to utilize 21, or they may have an opportunity to utilize Terry's Road. That remains to be seen, but it is quite narrow, the frontage that they have right now on Terry's Road.
Yeah, okay. Plus, our construction that we're having a lot of fun with right now of 21, it's concerning to have those large vehicles coming out, especially during rush hour. But things could be worse, so I'm going to vote to approve.
Historically, UD was allowed, basically was, it was like the free space, that's the way I look at it, on the monopoly board, but you could put everything there. And at some point, we... And at some point, we started pulling back, pulling back, getting rid of UD. So what's allowed by right now?
In the UD district?
UD, correct.
It's scores of uses, so I could certainly list them out and provide them to you in time for second reading. But unless you would like me to read them all out right now, there are quite a few.
I guess I'm just, I guess it'll depend on what the community says when they come forward with that. But I have always wondered what happened to UD and where the folks who owned UD, were they given notice of how those property uses were taken away incrementally? I'll reserve those questions when we get further along in the process. Maybe maybe this is an easy one. Any other questions for staff before we open up a public hearing?
Not necessarily a question, but I'll go ahead and say what I was thinking a minute ago when you went back to the previous picture, if you only roll back one. My concern with self-storage, when we brought this up, and we were talking about 616 Lake Wile, was just to get self-storage off of the main road. I'm not gonna vote against it because we haven't even discussed this yet. That won't happen until November. But it does concern me that self-storage is so visible when it doesn't really have to be. But when I look at the property, it would be difficult to lay this out any differently. Right? I mean, I understand it's laid out for biggest and best use. I get it. But kind of conflicts with what I was hoping we would do in the county after we have that discussion. So just, I'm just talking. I'm not asking for anything. I'm just sharing my opinion.
Any questions for staff?
Did, one more question. Did you say it's enclosed? They're enclosed?
Yes, as the applicant has laid out, they propose to have entirely structured parking for all of these vehicles so that all the vehicles will be enclosed in buildings.
Any other questions? All right, anyone here wish to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? Certainly, if you'll come forward, give your name and address.
I'm Richard Roach. I live at 4150 Mockingbird Lane, which is a secondary road. How many feet of road frontage off of 21 are you talking about if you approve this? The state highway of the state would let me on 324 two different times, two different locations. I had to give 350 feet of road frontage. How much road frontage is with this property?
Mr. Roach, the way this works is certainly one of us can make sure to ask those questions when council has that, has the floor. But we'll make sure to ask that question when it comes back to council.
Well, I just want to find out how you get by doing it if they're not getting 350 feet of road frontage and they're getting out on a busy highway like 21.
Thank you, sir.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
This cost me two times already. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Can I address real quickly? I'm Tom Daniel, 2940 Cary Forest Parkway, Tallahassee, Florida. And we are the people that want to put this here. And I just wanted to go over with you, this is not self-storage. The buildings are not self-storage buildings. You don't have what's, we do that, but it's not here. This is enclosed. We call it boat and RV storage. Fifty percent of that will be antique cars. These are all climatized, so we get labeled a lot of different things, and we're kind of an aberration. We've done about 15 of these across the country. Our architecture along the frontage will meet your ordinance, okay? We will not have, if we won't have your standard metal, we won't, we will meet your guidelines because we understand along 21, we want to look nice. So anyway, I wanted you to know that. And we're gonna work with staff, we're working with the neighbors, and we're working with South Carolina DOT to come up with the best location for our entrance. You might have, it's unmanned, and you may only have one or two vehicles at our highest. So it's all enclosed, fully secured, cameras, but we will, you know, we are going to do our best to make sure we meet all of your, we're not trying to get out of your guidelines and, you know, just with all the uses around. So anyway, wanted to say that, yes.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
I make a motion that we do approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I would like to ask the question that gentleman asked. What is the road frontage requirement for a facility of this nature?
So required road frontage is for the purposes of subdividing. So there's no subdivision being proposed here. The parcel is already in existence. They're not proposing to subdivide. So the frontage that they have, they'd be able to utilize. Now, they would have to design any entrances to meet the South Carolina arms manual, so they would certainly have to abide by that. But they're not looking to create a new parcel here.
What is the road frontage requirement for UD or LI?
That'll take me a little bit longer to look up than the density question earlier, so I can provide that for the next reading.
Okay, I'd like to have that. I think I think folks in the community are looking to kind of understand, perspective wise, what the road frontage requirements are. So I would like to have that listed in the staff's report at second reading.
Wouldn't you need to know what the gentleman's zoning was AGC, RUD, though? Because that's gonna be a little different.
I think that's for him to determine. All I want to know is what's the road frontage requirement for the use that they're requesting?
Yeah, fair enough.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Moving now to item number six, rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 24-46, tax map number 2310005, to rezone from AGC to RUD, 2.5 acre portion of a five acre parcel in District 3. Mr. Buono?
Yes, this RUD to AGC request is covering half of this existing parcel on Burris Road. So they are proposing to rezone the front portion to RUD and leave the back portion in the AGC district and then combine that remainder portion with the larger parcel that's labeled as 025 here. So looking to create one new two and a half acre parcel in RUD and then combine that balance of that acreage with the larger parcel behind it. So staff recommends approval with the condition, this request is not consistent with the comp plan and future land use map. If you look at the map on the right, it's entirely in that agriculture green, so that would seek that AGC district. However, there is RUD present in the vicinity, as is both RSF 40 and RSF 30. There are other properties that are under five acres in the area, and this particular property is not currently being used for farming. By a six to zero vote, Planning Commission also recommends approval with that same condition, and that's our standard conditional of approval, that the property has to be subdivided so that only one district is encompassed on each parcel after a rezoning is approved.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions for staff? Mr. Roby?
You mentioned there are other RUD parcels in the area. How many, about how many are in that immediate area?
So if you look at the map on the left there, that's the the mint green color. Those are the RUD parcels. So if you're looking for a tabulation within a certain distance, I can certainly provide that.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? If you'll come forward, give your name and address.
Name's Johnny Rowland. I live at 527 North Burris Road. We, it's always been our, our culture out there, you know, but we have a lot of people that has farm animals and my kids personally, you know, we have several dogs and chickens and stuff, you know, and I just, I want, I'd like to keep it the way it is. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against?
My name is Lloyd Cash. I live at 2382 Openwood Court. I live right around the corner from there. With cutting this up, all the parcels out there when that land was sold was five acre lots. That was the smallest then. And he said it was a bunch of lots that were smaller than two acres or two and a half acres. I don't know where they're at. Because all the parcels that I, the parcel that I bought down in there was five acres. And what's that gonna do for the road frontage right in there? And how's he gonna get back to the other parcel? What kind of road frontage is that gonna give here right in there for all that after subdividing all that?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Motion and a second.
Critic, mayor.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. Do you want? Any discussion on the public hearing? We'll have a motion after that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to, motion to, second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Yeah, I reached out to Mr. Williams. The neighbor is buying that parcel. This is sort of kind of a perfect example of of us not having in between for people on ag. The resident is still going to live there, which I know the parcel also, and most of that's hills and gullies, but his neighbor wanted to buy it so he had owned all that bigger parcel. And the gentleman, when I talked to him on the phone, he seemed like an older gentleman. But I would rather see it go to RUD than to go to any of the FS, smaller density that's across the road there. In other words, there ain't gonna be no road frontage other than what's already there on the small parcel.
I guess I do need to make one clarification. Was the motion made to approve with the condition as noted by staff and county management, the condition being that it must be subdivided so no more than one zoning district is applied to that parcel? I think you made the motion, and there were a couple of folks. Is the condition included on that? Is that yes? You made the motion? And motion and second, just to clarify. Any other discussion?
I have a question. So to speak to the gentleman's point about that back portion that's not gonna get rezoned, did I hear that that back portion is gonna now be included in the larger portion to make it one?
Yes, sir.
So they're gonna be combined with 0025. So you have this two and a half acre track up front. The back half is gonna go with the existing lot to the side, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, what, by doing this one to two and a half, what, what are we looking at down the road if they want to go, if somebody else in there wants to go down to two and a half and being in the midst of AGC? Because I know we have, we have a lot of conversation about protecting AGC, not going to higher density. And if we're allowing two and a half acres amongst five acre tracks, you know, somebody else is gonna want to sell off two and a half, somebody else is gonna want to sell off two and a half. Are we setting somewhat of a precedent in an area that's AGC in some smaller, but, you know, are we opening the door to more RUD in the area?
So this application is an interesting one in that there's an inherent conflict between what the comp plan recommends, which would be that this entire area be agriculture, and what the existing zoning is. So if you look at the existing zoning map on the left, AGC is probably the least represented district just in this snapshot. So, you know, there is RUD, there's RSF 30, there's RSF 40 in the yellow and the gold there. So while the planning looks at it as this is an agriculture area in the future, the current zoning says it's less agriculture than really anything else that's already there.
In transition.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously, first reading. Moving now to item number seven, rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 24-47, tax map number 24-47, tax map number 75300042, to rezone from RSF 40 to RUD, 0.42 acre portion of a 31.58 acre parcel in District 5. Mr. Buono?
Yes, this request on George Dunn Road is a very small downzoning for some split zone areas that are on this parcel. So what the applicant really is proposing to do here is to subdivide this existing parcel into two separate pieces, one that is about 24 and a half acres, another that is seven acres. The problem is that they've got RSF 40 on some of that property amidst the majority that is RUD. So in order to ensure that both new parcels are one zoning district, they would rezone here to get rid of that split zoning status. So staff recommends approval. It is consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map of rural residential here. The vast majority of the parcel is already RUD, and it eliminates that split zoning. By a six to zero vote, Planning Commission also recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Do we have a new motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We're moving now to item number eight. Council to hold a public hearing and to provide third reading of an ordinance to authorize the sale of property identified by tax map number 5940204002 and situated on 166 and 210 Dotson Street, Rock Hill, South Carolina, to entertain an existing offer to purchase the parcel, to authorize the execution of the contract and sale indeed, to provide a public hearing and to provide further matters relating thereto. Any comments from management or staff? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor?
My name is Bakari Rawlson. I live at 767 River Crest Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I do a lot in the community far as football and sports, and I do some things for prevention programs as well. I looked at that property and I see where we could have a lot of room for advancement in the community far as prevention programs and also teaching individuals about college recruiting, parents on what is needed for the college recruiting. A lot of people think because they get offers, they're gonna go to their college. That's not so. Offers is just like selling cars. You may get it or you may not get it. People don't understand that. And I think that if we can educate more of the young individuals that are in school that don't have an understanding, and some of the parents, we can increase more, the word I want to use is like academia, we can educate more people. And we can also reduce crime from within the schools by getting more guys to understand and get them educated, push out to a lot of the other colleges. Because we can bring colleges in, and we can also get those kids recruited. And what we need basically is a hub here in this area. If we have that, that would drastically reduce some crime within the schools, and that would put, that would also bring more educated individuals back into our communities that could create businesses and that could be future leaders to help our community to continue to grow. That's one of the things that I want to see happen. And as me leading a nonprofit group, I do have some backing with some things that we do that we can also turn that area into as well. We do, we, during the holidays, we give out food. I mean, we... also turn that area into as well. We do, during the holidays, we give our food. I mean, we give our clothes. We do a lot within that community. But when it comes to sports, that's one of my big things. I have a huge name in the college football world. A lot of people don't know that. But I want to get more people educated. I want to get more guys into college. I want to get more people out there and bring them back in our community educated to help our community continue to grow. And I think if we have that area and that facility, we can increase those numbers. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. We do not have any older new business items tonight. We do have committee reports, Economic Development Committee from Chairman Tom Aldette.
Yes, good evening. So, present at our meeting was Councilwoman Love and Councilman Huckabee. We had a great discussion around our strategic plan as we look forward in the economic development world and how we can continue to move forward. What's exciting about it is one of the outcomes we had that we came out of there was what we call Small Business Toolkit. And that Small Business Toolkit will be launched to York County. And what it's going to be, it's going to be a website that will allow small businesses, entrepreneurs to go there, look for the information they need to start a small business, look for financing, many different things, you know, and help answer questions. It's one thing that we need in the area to continue on to support our small businesses. And we're looking probably around January time to probably launch this. We are in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce with this, SBDC, and also the COG. So, it's exciting, very exciting. Very good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Aldette.
You got it.
I believe you also are going to lead us in the Finance and Operations Committee.
Yes. Tonight for the finance meeting, Councilmember Atkins was there and myself. And as we move forward with the meeting, there were several approvals that we approved tonight. And these were committee approval seats for service. The first one was Stormwater Appeals Board. We made a recommendation for approval of Kendall Holbrook for a second term. Catawba Mental Health Board Recommendation for Approval of Sandra Calhoun White for a second term. Leslie Fire Tax District Board Recommendation and Consideration for Reappointment of Michael Garuth for a second term. We also had a Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee Recommendation for Consideration of Ashima Singal for a first term. And we also had Rock Hill York County Convention in Visitor Bureau Recommendation for Consideration of Melinda Foster for a first term. We also did approve two allocations. So, basically, the committee considered approval for allocations of funds for District 4 to Jamie Nichols Alumni Scholarship for the amount of $1,500. The committee also approved allocations of funds from District 4 for St. Mary's Outreach Program in the amount of $3,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aldette. We do not have any citizen concerns tonight. Are there any councilmember new knowledge in the comments before we move into executive session?
Yes, we, oh, go ahead.
You go ahead.
No, you go. No, I'm good.
Well, first of all, I'd like Forest continuing to have all the one up in the mountains, even from Cherokee County up for the devastation. I know that when I woke up the other morning and I went out and when our barns had the roof and I was all upset and everything, but when the news started coming in, I didn't fix one side of it. My problems are menaces. But also, I'd like to shout out to all the farmers to be aware, we had a local farmer a couple of weeks ago, him and his wife was robbed. And whether you're self-producing farm or not, just be a little leery of who comes up on your farm. We sort of secluded a lot, and some of these folks are getting wise to that. So, just urge them to keep an eye out. And hopefully, the Sheriff's Department will have some meetings and... That's about it.
Yeah. I would just like to say that my heart is with our folks in the mountains, but my heart is also in Florida because I have a lot of friends, I mean, a lot of friends right now that are... I just got a text from one of them stuck in traffic trying to evacuate the Tampa area. So, if we could speak to, I mean, if everybody would just remember that area tonight in prayer. And we all have stories. I know that we've, I've been glued unfortunately to my Facebook page. But this afternoon coming in, I just heard a heart-wrenching plea from a teacher in Black Mountain. She said, number one, we don't have a school for the kids to go to. But number two, if we could find a place, we need teachers. We're missing 24 teachers. We don't know if they're dead or alive. And that sober's you up, that those kids are missing their teacher. They don't know where their teacher is. But anyway, so we just continue to pray. And we, as a family, support Samaritan's Purse. I hate to single things out, but they're a wonderful group. You know that I think it's 99.9% of their donations go directly to the devastation.
Thank you, Dave. So, this is going to be a couple of shout-outs in the talk about, you know, again, the event that occurred here with the storm. But I first want to give a shout-out to York Electric Co-op. The work they did over the last days that occurred with the storm was phenomenal. They worked through the night. Linemen were out there. Also, too, with their partnership with Duke, it was amazing. And by, you know, the time that they got them back up and the last person was there, there were continued updates going out. So, again, I want to give them the shout-out for the hard work that they did. They also, with the hurricane, the outreach that is happening from our local churches has been phenomenal. And I want to praise the local churches and the body of the people that have been participating across all spectrums. My wife and I actually went up on Friday and worked up in Newland area on homes up there, and the devastation was unbelievable. And again, my prayers, my thoughts go out to them. This is going to be a long journey for them, but everybody's participation in the partnership that we're doing is amazing. And again, I do want to also give a shout-out to Samaritan's Purse for the work that they're doing. And again, also to York County Emergency Management, et cetera. It's a partnership, but it's also a community outreach. And the community, I want to thank the community. People are stepping up left and right. So, a big shout-out to them, to the community, again, in the churches. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, it was news to me to find out that the area qualified for some FEMA assistance to be sure that we get that up on our website, whether it's phone numbers, emails, websites. Just to reiterate that, because I did receive some calls asking what kind of assistance. A lot of people, obviously, when the power was out for several days, lost groceries and that kind of thing. And I'm not sure how low the level is going to get to provide assistance. But when your power was out for an extended period of time, unless you have generators and things that back it up, you know, a lot of people did lose those kind of things. But luckily for us, we didn't take a big hit compared to what we're seeing on the news and the devastation that we're seeing. So, we're definitely blessed when it comes to that. And this area always seems to be on the, I would say, the given end because we're so far inland, we don't take a lot of hits. But at times, we, when we were asked to step up and do for others, whether it's in the mountains, whether it's on the coast, or wherever it happens, I know this area has a history of digging deep in their pocketbooks, digging deep in their time that they give to help with those efforts. So, I don't expect it to be any different this time than it's been in years in the past. So, just encourage you to continue to do everything that you can do and that you want to do to help people kind of get through because our time is coming sooner or later, we're going to be counting on those same individuals to reciprocate those efforts back to us sooner or later.
Kind of same comments, just continue to pray for the people that were affected by the storm, those that are volunteering to help, and those that are donating. Just appreciate what everybody's doing to make a difference.
We have amazing people in this county, and I'm very thankful to see so many folks taking a leadership role. And I do want, once again, for folks who didn't hear the beginning of the meeting, if there are folks in the community who want to contribute to help and make donations to the western North Carolina, you can do that here at 6 South Congress Street from the 8th until the 18th, as well as at the Heckle location. You are, if you can go on the York County website, that's where you can get the most information. There also is support from FEMA and from the state, from SBA loans to individual support. All of that, once again, is going to be, as I understand it, Josh, on the website, as well as... Facebook has already put some links out there that folks can follow up on. Is there anything more specific you want to provide so that folks know how to access that?
Yeah, that's correct, Madam Chair. I think the best place to go is the link we're going to be sharing all over the place, which is the FEMA link, which explains what's available to folks. And that, all people's questions could be answered there. We're also going to be working to set up a location where residents can go and meet and get their questions answered related to FEMA. And that's something that will come later. We'll obviously share that location when it's set up.
Thank you, sir. And the best location for that is the website, York County website. The one thing I did want to add is that I do serve on, South Carolina Association of Counties has several boards and committees that they have at the state level. I do serve on the Legislative Committee. That is an initiative where the folks throughout the state push for changes at the state level for changes that the counties as a whole put together. I attended that meeting a couple of weeks ago. There's going to be another meeting before they solidify their policy plan. One of the things that they were focusing on, which I think is important, especially in our area, is really honing in on these annexation issues, trying to eliminate the 75% rule, as well as eliminating forced annexations. Folks who currently receive water and sewer services, some of those folks are being coerced into giving up that or suggesting that they would lose those rights if they didn't annex. Those are things that I think that one of the policy considerations that the state's looking at. I think that's important. If there's any other legislative initiatives that the council wants to look at, we need to make sure we have that before the next meeting in November.
I'll add that too, real quickly. So, I'm on the South County Association of Counties. I serve on a committee as well, the Revenue Finance Economic Development Steering Committee. We met two weeks ago as well. A lot of the issues, there's too many for me to even mention here, but these are suggestions we're making to the General Assembly to consider changes that are in the best interest of the citizens of South Carolina. But if any of you have any ideas or suggestions around revenue, finances, economic development, let me know. Any thoughts that you think would be good for the state, and I'll pass it along to the committee. We meet again in November. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, motion for executive session. We have three items that we're going to be speaking of. And the first is a motion for receipt of legal contractual matter, project elizer. Elisher?
Elixir.
Yep.
Sorry.
The second is economic development update, project universal. And the next one is receipt of legal advice, contractual matter, litigation, and legal update.
A second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll move straight into executive session. We'll move straight into executive session. Any opposed, hearing none, we'll move straight into executive session. We are out of executive session, no action was taken, do we have any motions?
We do, we have one motion, council authorized the retention of Chad Johnston, of Burr Foreman, and John Robinson, of Smith Robinson as outside defense counsel, that is discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Motion adjourned.
All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.